Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Oh, wow.
Thank you for coming on this warm day and spending your Valentine's Day with us. So with that, I'd like to start the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the current spectrum cable agreement. Second? Thank you, Rick. All the bearers say aye?
Aye.
All right, all right. So let me lead off a little bit. We brought this to the attention of everybody only because Redhook had changed their definition of the spectrum agreement in terms of the gross revenues portion of it, plus some other changes we don't care about. The main issue was the gross revenue. So they made a change. I wanted to bring it to this board to see if this board was open to that change to move forward, because if it didn't, part of it affects our budgets and our process. So there's really three things.
Where are you going to, like, the details of the change?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna grant you that.
Okay.
I'm just gonna summary here.
Okay, good.
The summary is, there's three things we need to consider in terms of the gross revenue. One is, we have an existing 91, 92 document that clearly defines what the gross revenue is that we've been living under for since, for 30 years. That we receive revenues from every year from Spectrum based on the franchise agreement and the gross revenue definition that's in that document. We had the Redhook document, which changed that in their definition by getting 3/5 of what they were normally getting, which reduces the gross revenue into the town of Redhook, only the town of Redhook, doesn't affect anybody else. They changed their agreement, and that's the one that they brought forward and said, hey, would anybody else? Because they have spent time negotiating that. And then the third possibility is, I think trustee Nurekhar has done some investigation work, maybe has another proposal to go for. But if you're here to talk about service, reliability, that kind of stuff, it's really not pertaining to this document, and we're talking about the gross revenue portion and what we want to do going forward.
Can I just remember real quick before break, is in the details? So just so it's clear for the public, what is this agreement actually agreeing to? Like, we get franchise fees in exchange for what?
The use of the right of way.
So allowing Spectrum to have their lines on the telephone calls?
In the Village of Rhinebeck.
In the Village of Rhinebeck, okay. Perfect, thank you. I think, I think that's a question that a lot of people.
It doesn't matter, this is all geared around the subscribers in the Village of Rhinebeck. Has no impact on the town or anybody else. We all have our own.
And we cannot use this agreement to encourage or carrot or stake Spectrum to provide better service?
Yeah.
Ah, point of order? Okay, great. Thank you, Brad. All right, so.
So in our, in our old agreement, section four, service quality, "Subject to applicable law, the operator shall maintain and operate its cable television system at all times in compliance with the rules and regs of the New York State CCT cable da-da-da."
There you go.
And the technical requirements of the FCC. So is that strong coverage? I don't know.
Well, but I think what.
We can't say you need to increase your upload speeds.
Right, you might have to read that, those regulations, to see if we have any teeth in that.
Oh, wow.
Right.
I doubt it.
I doubt it too, that you could change bandwidth.
Okay.
Okay?
Got it. So the only reason that Spectrum would ever change bandwidth short of us hiring a lawyer who understands the federal law and this stuff is because they see a reason to do it? Because there's enough people here that are putting enough pressure on them that.
Or a competitor comes in.
Or a competitor comes in.
Do we have any other offers on the table from other cable companies?
Is this an exclusive agreement?
No.
No.
Okay.
But anybody who comes in has to get the rights to be on the poles.
Right, and they would have to come to us to get the rights to be on.
No, they gotta go to Central Hudson.
Well, both.
Well, both.
Central Hudson's poles, we on the right of way, and they would on the cable.
All right, okay.
And the phone company Frontier has high-speed internet over the copper lines.
Correct. I mean, we have unlit fiber that runs up Route 9, but.
It's unlit?
Yeah.
Charming.
You mean someone just, it's the.
So just.
Our fiber, it's just there, ready to harness?
It's like 9K wide. Well, still, this is not the cable that goes to Kingston.
Really?
You're making some objections, so we don't know.
Okay.
Not in knowledge.
And we're gonna hold them to that.
Okay, so details.
So yeah, our gross revenue language is different than the Redhook. On the Redhook gross revenue language, I agree with Spectrum, I spoke to the Spectrum rep, that we would lose about 12 to 14% of our revenue with that Redhook language.
Okay.
And I think that Karen said that we'd make about 68 grand a year in franchise fees. So the cable company came back to the mayor and I with a new gross revenue language that they thought would be acceptable. So gross revenue means any revenue, blah, blah, blah. That will, but shall not include any taxes, fees, or assessments collected by the grantee from subscribers for pass-through to a government agency, including without limitation any state or federal regulatory fees, the franchise fee, or any sales or utility taxes. Two, unrecovered bad debt. Three, credits, refunds, and deposits paid to subscribers. And four, any exclusions available under applicable state law. So my cable consultant didn't like one, and didn't like four. So one is the fee on fee, so we get, the taxes are included in our gross revenue. So we would lose like, I think, $250, $300 a month over 10 years, that's a lot of money. And then this catch-all phrase, which I didn't like either, "Any exclusions available under applicable state law." I mean, we know that the cable operators are constantly lobbying all of them for sweeter deals, so why would we want to include that dangerous language? So my thinking is we should give up on asking Spectrum to improve the gross revenue language.
We should keep it as what we have.
From 1993.
Like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any way that we could plow out our definition into the Redhook agreement and just say, "The Village of Rhinebeck's definition."
That's our problem.
Okay.
And we're gonna go back to a negotiation?
If you wanna go back, he's gonna tell me, think you know, but.
Right, yeah, okay.
I think, I think we make out, we make out under this agreement, let's keep it, and we're done.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's interesting, because I spoke to, you know, Alex with Spectrum, and he said, he thought that Redhook was kind of binding our five municipality agreement anyway. I think we should look into that, if that's true. So what, what Spectrum could do is invoice us for that 54 grand and hand a capital.
I did reach out to Talon Redhook, and they said, "We are not bound by their agreement." And their legal confirmed that we are not bound by their agreement. So it's only for the Talon Redhook.
And we're not signing it.
I think we should independently verify that.
You can, but I.
What if I call Spectrum and ask them if they could just invoice the five municipalities?
Why would we want?
They've done that before.
Time out. Why would we want to pay part of that $54,000 that's in the capital agreement that Redhook negotiated, that Spectrum is going to pay to Panda? Redhook isn't paying that.
We're gonna pay for it with village funds, and the, the, Spectrum will actually invoice the people with their monthly bills.
I think, first of all, the old agreement was $75,000.
Yeah.
It's gone down. So the $54,000 is for capital equipment.
Yes.
For Panda, but we provide operating expenses.
Right.
That's what we're.
We're also obligated under the IMA to, to pay for our share of the capital expenditures. Probably. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, we could verify this, but.
We gotta get it from Robert.
What we've been told from Robert is that that $54,000 is independent of any of our other agreements. Totally. That's what I can tell you.
The whole words that I found suggest otherwise, except in a different agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think we should have our attorney look at all of these different things, just to make sure that we're not gonna be on the hook for 1/5 of $54,000.
Because I think Spectrum.
I mean, I would find it difficult to say that that's enforceable if we don't sign, but, you know.
I did ask, at Nycom when we were there, Alex was there, I asked him about the $54,000 as well, and he said, or, I asked him, are anybody else obligated with that $54,000? And he said, no.
I don't.
So is that coming out of Spectrum's coffers?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it doesn't. They pass it through to the users.
Well, I'm sure they will pass it through to the users.
Right, but I don't think they're actually gonna pass it through just to the Redhook users.
So let's find out.
That's what I wanna do.
Oh.
See, see what I mean?
Oh, okay. Not us, but our users in the village. Got it.
So if the IMA, we show, we show Spectrum the IMA, and he's spread it amongst the five municipalities, like they should, because our IMA somewhere says that we're supposed to pay for our share of the capital expenditure. That's how that $75,000 was distributed.
Got it.
Years ago, from what I understand.
Okay, all right, well, let's get a verification on that one.
Let me look at, just one more time.
Yeah, I think it's fair.
So since we're open, there's also the public comment. Is there anybody here that wouldn't like to make comments on this?
All of us are incredibly transparent.
Simple.
It's like, what have they done?
First of all, I'm rather perplexed about this meeting in terms.
Oh, you might want to turn the mic on or the switch on the, on the top there.
Yeah, please. Okay, how about now?
Great, and could you say your name and your.
I said, I'm rather perplexed. I have two documents that were on the website, and neither one is really a new contract for Rhinebeck Village. The two documents are out there, the proposed contract for Redhook Town and the town of Rhinebeck's, current contract. So usually a public hearing is to talk about the particular documents or whatever agreements that they really have. It sounds like you're proposing that we add to the Village of Rhinebeck's franchise the language that the town of Redhook has incorporated about funding, about getting the franchise fees and so on. Is that, is that correct?
No, we're not proposing that, Paul. We're proposing that we don't add that language.
You don't have that language?
We did, we're proposing that we do not add that language.
Right, that's what you're proposing. What are you proposing in terms of changes to?
Right now, the current definition is to stay with what we have from the 1991 document.
Okay, no changes?
No changes.
No changes?
It probably really is just a public meeting instead of a public hearing on this.
All right, so typically you have a public hearing before you make changes, as part of the process of making changes to the franchise.
And that's what we're talking about today.
All right, and what we're saying is, you're proposing that we don't have any change to our document at all, to our franchise.
So at our last meeting, Paul, trustee Nurekhar asked to go off and do the investigation to see if there was any opportunity to make changes different than what the 91 or the Redhook was. He came back with a recommendation that said, "We got a proposal," but he recommends not changing to that proposal and stay with what was already existing.
Okay. The other comments I would like to make, for sure, is that Rhinebeck is really dependent now upon robust communications infrastructure. And I certainly hope that part of the working, the reworking of the master plan is to include somehow a emphasis on a communications infrastructure. Over the years, we've relied on the river for transportation, on the railroads, and what have you. And now the only thing I think that Rhinebeck really exports is bits. So you need the communication structure, infrastructure, to be at the top of its game. And with respect to having any leverage for making that happen, there's very little leverage. And the only leverage that I know of is what's in the village contract and the town contract here, which is to be included in the first 50% of systems to get new technology. The town contract franchise says addressable technology. The village contract says any technology, in effect. So what I would really.
Paul, do you have a copy of the village one? Because we tried locating the village one, and we were told the town was, was the same as all, same as.
I can get the village one.
Oh, I couldn't find, we could not, I couldn't find it. Could you share that?
It's in Christie's office, yeah.
I got a copy and email a while ago from Pat that was an email to me, but I can't get out of probably, because I can't get to my Prodigy email.
We haven't.
So I, Pat did have a copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have a copy?
I do, yeah.
Well, can we get a copy of that up on the, on the website, so that we can have a look at it?
Yeah.
Sure, Brad will share. We'll find it. We couldn't find it, we look for it.
Because there are differences. And 20 years ago, or whatever, we delayed the differences in the five, or five contracts. Interesting thing about the Village of Redhook contract is they had a person allocated as part of their payment or whatever to run the public access. Which has never been, the trouble with the public access funding is that we never really pursued it like we should have, probably, and it's been 20 years or more, or whatever, and it's gonna be very difficult, in my opinion, to get any additional funding out of it because of you let it lapse, in fact.
Well, just so everybody knows, actually, as part of the infrastructure bill that was just passed, I don't know, a few months ago, by the Biden administration, actually, an extraordinary amount of money has been dedicated to.
I'm sorry, I really can't hear. I'm not.
Oh, an extraordinary amount of money has been dedicated in the most recent infrastructure bill that was passed about five or six months ago by the federal government to rural broadband infrastructure, 5G, all of the stuff to help with communications in these rural areas. And so the comprehensive plan committee, at least one member on it, is thinking strongly about how to leverage some of that and how to bring it into the village. But yes, I agree with you that, you know.
Need robust.
These cable bodies have always looked at PEG as being really allocated among the five communities and not in any particular contract. Even though only three of the contracts have the PEG and two don't. The Village of typically, and the town of Redhook don't mention it at all.
Okay.
Interesting.
But the five municipalities do share, Paul, in the, in the, in the payment of supporting panel.
Yeah.
Right, so the cost of Panda is distributed based on subscribers across the five municipalities.
Which is in the IMA.
Yeah, and for quite some time, the, I think it was, typically in the town of Redhook, we're not paying our fair share for some time. So you really gotta watch what happens.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Linda.
When I read the documents on the portal, Village Portal, I noticed yet again that there is no provision for taking down the telephone poles. There's a provision for when they want to put one up, but nothing for when they take it down and having any responsibility or association with it. Is there any way we could do something like we did for the cellular towers? Where we said, "You have to post a bond. If you want this contract, you have to post a bond for the removal, so that people like me don't have two, and other people don't have three telephone poles on their property." I have a dead telephone pole on my property, nothing on.
So that's separate, though, from Spectrum? That's Central Hudson, right?
It's, it's Central Hudson, it is Spectrum, and, or actually, it's Frontier and Central Hudson, and someone else. I can't remember.
Central Hudson owns a pole.
So I think the question here is, yes, Linda, when we're, when we are faced with an opportunity to make sure that we can have people take responsibility for the poles, we will actually do this, do that, but this is not that opportunity.
Are we sure it's Central Hudson? Because this is, we don't want to miss this opportunity.
No, we are sure.
We put that in the fifth generation bill, law that we just passed.
Yeah, that's what I said. I thought it up then, you put it in that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, good point.
Yep.
Anybody else to public comment? Hearing done. We're gonna close the public hearing portion of the meeting. We'll go back to a comment based on doing the reference. I will, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So pass. Very good. Okay. We have a wonderful opportunity tonight to witness our Buckley Middle School in action. So tonight, we're gonna have the Buckley Middle School talk about a project they are working on. This is, I'm just gonna introduce them, and I'm gonna turn the stage over to them and let them explain everything, all right? So this is Elsa Humphrey, Violet Renato, Zoe Davie, Oscar Clark, Piper Martin, Rio Derman, and McKinley Jenda. Are they all here? I think I see them all. I would like to have you all come forward. And present.
Do you need to present your computer?
No, we have. Oh, yeah.
While they're getting set up, I just wanted to say that a different group from the same class came to the comprehensive planning meeting on Thursday to talk about safe routes to school. And it's like so life-threatening, honestly, these presentations and the work that the seventh graders are doing. So I'm really looking toward in this one.
Okay. You are, you're connected to my phone.
We love technology.
It's on my phone.
I thought I could, yeah.
There you go, we're connected.
Do you need the internet?
Oh, no, we have a hotspot.
Oh, it works.
If it works.
You can use the Village Public, right? There you go. There you got some.
All right, can you?
So Zoe, do you have to?
So Zoe, introduce yourself to me in public. Speak into the microphone if you can.
Okay, I'm sorry. So as Mayor Bassett said, we are from Buckley Middle School. And we as a, not just class, but as a community, want to set up a way to set up, sorry, I just said set up twice, to implement water fountains into the Village of Rhinebeck. We'll give up the locations soon. I don't want to spoil anything. But I do want to stay at it in the water fountain. There will be obviously the drinking fountain, the water bottle, the water bottle filler, and the dog bowl. Yeah.
We'll just hold this section.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on.
I need to get to my email.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay. Okay, well, I connected. This is working.
It's fine. Okay, okay, so no presentation.
It isn't working.
Is it active?
Yeah, it's, the presentation. No, you won't, I don't think it like updates the share, like whenever, like, because I.
Did you have their play?
Yeah, we do, yes.
You guys will have your. Wait, why don't you log into Oscar's? Yeah, you can just grab it where you can log into Oscar's.
So do you have their play?
Uh, yeah, we're just gonna log into Christine's, so we can access the actual hard one.
Okay.
Um, sorry for the difficulties.
Rick.
Why don't I tell you a little bit about some of the highs and the seeds that are going out?
Henry, come on up.
Okay. So while they're figuring out the, the technical stuff, I'm Henry Frischknecht. I teach civics in the middle school. These guys and gals are part of a larger contingent of students. We just implemented enrichment classes in the middle school, and part of that is civics and community engagement. And so all the students in the four classes were given an opportunity to choose something that they felt strongly about, an issue that they saw in the school or in the larger community. This group decided, you know, it's a little frustrating to go through town and have to purchase water, so they wanted to see water fountains be put in. The group that presented with Lydia last week, they were talking about safe routes to school. We have a group that is doing a safe space for kids in town that isn't CVS. That's my little caveat at the end. I don't know if you ever go to CVS, but it's a little wild there sometimes. We have a group that's doing a hydroponic garden in the school, which is really, really cool. We have a group that wanted to take on a pollinator pathway through, through the village. So really, really interesting projects that they have come up with all 100% on their own. The class is ungraded. There's no other accountability other than them showing up. So they're all here at, you know, 7 o'clock at night on a Tuesday to present for a class that they will not receive a grade for, a class that really they could, there's nothing I could do if they just didn't want to do anything. So it really speaks volumes to their own commitment and the engagement that they have. So.
Yeah, no presentation.
They can share the presentation with you at a later time.
We're from Buckley Middle School, and in this project, all seven of us in our civics class, we came up with a project that hopefully will make a positive difference in the town of Rhinebeck. For example, our project is making water fountains for the town. We would have at least two water fountains, including, included with a regular drinking fountain, a water bottle filler, and a dog bowl. And as you might know, as kids, we spend over seven and a half hours in school each day. School is very exhausting, and walking home would be a great time to be able to have water, especially if it's a longer distance. When we go into town, we don't always think to bring a water bottle with us, but having a water fountain would be able to let us have the water, or if we run out of water, we could fill it up. And for the locations of them, we're thinking of putting one, one of the water fountains for the people at the mini park on South Parks and Street, and one by Village Hall right outside on East Market Street, across from Center Street. It is vital that citizens of Rhinebeck have easy and affordable access to water. And the water fountain model we are proposing also gives pets the option to drink water. The Village of Rhinebeck is a popular tourist destination, and water fountains give people who may not be familiar with the stores of Rhinebeck opportunities to hydrate themselves. Now, you might be thinking that these water fountains may hinder business for restaurants and stores in the village that would benefit from the purchase of water, but that's not necessarily true. People will still be drawn to buying bottled water from stores, and the water fountains work as an asset to fill them up, which is also one of the reasons why water, why water fountains are so important. I think we would all agree that it is critical that.
I think we would all agree that it is critical that Rhinebeck is recognized as an environment, as an environmentally friendly village. And we can guarantee that the water fountains will contribute to limiting plastic waste, the plastic waste from the town. For all these reasons, we hope that you recognize how important and beneficial water, water fountains would be for the Village of Rhinebeck.
Buckley, it's not just a few people who think it would be a good idea. We sent a survey out to the entire, the entirety of Buckley Middle School. Many of the people who responded said that it would be a good idea to put the water fountains in the town. To be more exact, around 22% of the people were upset that they were unsure. 18% said that they don't want a water fountain in the town. And the remaining 60% of the people said that water fountains would be a good idea for the community. The price with direct burial would be around $26,500. However, the people who would use the water fountains wouldn't just be the children of the town, let alone the children of Buckley Middle School. Adults could use them, young children, high schoolers, and even pets could use them. To conclude, we are seeking to have drinking fountains installed in the Village of Rhinebeck because of the need for kids to stay hydrated and fill up their water bottles. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was, there was one more component you were going to talk about.
Yes.
How you're going to raise money.
So we are thinking about writing a proposal to Frost Foundation, but we also have some other ideas for how to raise some money. So we were thinking of making a QR code that we would set up around town that people can pull up and donate money to. Oh, yeah. So we were also thinking that it might be interesting to hold a raffle in school or in the town as a whole to raise some money. We can maybe get like local restaurants and stores involved in that so they can also be included. Oh, we were also going to write a proposal along with the Frost Foundation to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. And yeah, that's it. That's basically all that we had ideas for, but those are all like very promising ideas.
Can I ask a question? Is there anything that makes, in particular about these water fountains? I know the answer to this, and so this is a very guiding question, that makes them so special, the, the reason why they're so expensive?
So the freezer system adds a lot of cost to them. It would be a lot cheaper if they weren't freezer system.
But it's cold here.
Plus, it also has the three packs for water bottles, regular drinking, and for animals.
But it's really the fact that it can run throughout the winter?
Yes, that's, that's the big part. That adds a lot of money.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Has this been done anywhere else?
Um, yes.
Red Hook.
Yeah, so they have water fountains in Red Hook and then also, yeah, Massachusetts, a town in Massachusetts.
Great Barrington.
Yeah, Great Barrington. They, they raise money through the QR code to make water fountains too. So, and that really, that, that was very successful for them. So there's definitely like a lot of promise in that idea.
Do we need to help them get the funding together?
So I believe your goal is to raise 100% of the funding through grants or community involvement. And then you're asked for the villages, for the Village of Rhinebeck, to do the direct burial of the, of the fountain, correct?
The installation.
And the insulation.
And we know that they are doing some construction on the road around here, so we were thinking that that would be a good opportunity to, to put these water fountains in.
Sure, sure state.
This, this also aligns with another project in the group, right? There's another. There's another project going on and the reason why you picked these two locations?
Okay, so on the safe routes to school, they also want to add a water fountain around the town. So we could work with them and then, and then their project would be more successful than ours.
You should mention that in your grant applications.
You guys did a great job. I will say it's been a pleasure working with this group for the past month or two months. I'm guiding them through the process and I know they were very nervous, but they did well, didn't they? Okay. Next on the agenda, public comment session. You open public comments. Linda.
Linda Christensen, 37th South Street. I just wanted to, I know that Six Mulberry is on the agenda tonight, but I didn't know if I'd be able to make this comment at that time. But it's really more a question. On January 9th, John Lyons requested that the group of people known as his clients, basically the neighbors of Six Mulberry, wanted to be treated akin to an interested agency. And I wanted to know if the board has addressed that in any way.
It, it's still ongoing.
You gotta address it tonight.
No, we are not, we are not going to address it tonight because it's still an ongoing discussion of how we want to handle that. We have all several suggestions that we're working through, but we haven't picked an alternative of a, a position to come back to the board yet. So it's on, it's still ongoing.
So who is doing that?
So myself, Lydia, and our venue's attorney, David Gordon.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Treasurers' report.
Okay, Treasurers' report is for the period ending January 31st. The general fund ended the month with $170,170.89. The water fund ended the month with $149,781.40. And the sewer fund ended the month with $187,135.06. Our combined New York class accounts in the general water and sewer earned $8,736 of interest for the month of January. Vouchers presented for payment.
Wow, that's good. Finally. Finally, we are in interest.
Right?
Yes.
Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $168,726.87. In the water fund, $58,024.44. In the sewer fund, $76,098.512. We have one bill for the wastewater treatment plant of $1,056.536. We paid a bond for the fire rescue truck in the amount of $35,424.75. We had two escrow, escrow projects paid, the Hump, $2,008.75, and Grasmere, $4,065. An operating statement is provided for the revenue expenditures through February 14th. Billing and adjustments, as signed off by Trustee Hinnaker, are presented for authorization.
I'd like to get the adjustments to water and wastewater approved as submitted.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Budget 2324. Department budget meetings are tentatively scheduled as follows. On February 21st, Tuesday night at 5:00 PM, that will be highway, police, and court. On Thursday, February 23rd, that will be water and sewer. And then Martina will go over the, the meeting changes when she gets to her report.
Is that February 23rd, 5:00 PM as well?
Yes. They're both at 5:00 PM. And then one thing we do know that we have is Tuesday, April 11th, if the board and the public are satisfied with the budget, we will hold the public hearing that day. Budget amendments will be presented at the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Resolutions. First resolution on the agenda tonight is an IMA with Dutchess County for short-term reimbursement rental. To summarize this agreement, this is, as I mentioned, with Dutchess County. Dutchess County has a relationship with Granicus. We also have a relationship with Granicus for our short-term vacation rentals. The fact that we are with Granicus and they are with Granicus, all the same information gets shared. As a result, we get a reimbursement back for our expenses for what we pay Granicus for doing the online monitoring for us on a 24 by 7 basis. So we spend approximately $2,600 a year. The county will reimburse up to $5,000 per year for us to reimburse us for covering the Granicus. So this intermunicipal agreement between the County of Dutchess and Municipal Corporation and the Village of Rhinebeck, right, is to address the resolution to accept the payment from the county for reimbursement to Granicus.
Second.
Do I have a motion?
Just so moved.
Right. I have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
This reimburses our expenses.
Yes. I mean, we are, we are in Granicus because Dutchess County said that they would reimburse us for it, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Let me get a little note here. Just give some information. I just drew it down to note, I didn't get it out of pocket, excuse me, but.
Short-term.
The short-term.
Enforcement.
So.
Enforcement on our permits.
Everybody always asks, where are we with our short-term vacation rentals? How many there are? What are they doing? For 2023, starting in the new year, total unhoseded, short-term vacation rentals is zero for the year so far. Total hosted, which includes bed and breakfasts, is six. Maribellas commonly didn't have because they advertised on Airbnb. So Maribella is one of the six. So far in the last six months, we've had two violations and they were all caught by Granicus and acted upon by our building planning and zoning department.
Cool.
So Granicus has paid off and it's working for us.
Great.
And the county gets the hotel tax.
Correct.
But they are liberal Granicus funding because we're helping them get their bed tax.
Because we make.
The county collects a bed tax, they're taking that money and giving it back to us. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Next resolution. No parking on Livingston Street at Terrapin. So let me just find this. I think everybody's aware that there's been some changes on Livingston Street at the Terrapin spot in regard to them reallocating their parking lot space and building an outdoor table assignment, which in the result has opened up some more parking for us in the Village of Rhinebeck. It used to be no parking on both sides of the street. There was no parking before some improvements were made to the street because it was too narrow of cars parked on both sides to allow traffic and trucks to navigate that, navigate that corner. That problem has been fixed. We don't allow parking on the one side, but we can allow parking on the Terrapin side and we can add additional spots for the Village of Rhinebeck. So this is to change the B and T law. B and T stands for vehicle traffic law that is current on the books that says no parking to allow parking on that side of the street next to Livingston Street.
So this, this is basically just to schedule the public hearing for next month?
Yes. We have to have a public hearing on it. So I'd like to make a motion to proceed to the public hearing for the agreement of removing the no parking on Livingston Street.
Second.
For what date?
Any discussion?
This is just 60 feet, right?
March 14th.
The 60 feet is the current space that's in the book that we removed.
It says 7:00 PM, so it's 6:00 PM.
It says 7:00 PM on the resolution, but can we do it at 6:00 PM?
Pardon? I need.
What time do we want to do the public hearing?
6:00.
Okay, great. How many parking spaces do we think it's going to add? Three potentially?
Four plus. Because of the change in our parking lot, if we remove the 60 feet, it can actually go back to 15 feet from the entrance. There's a fire hydrant and a stop sign.
We moved the fire hydrant, so that created more space there and then.
And the parking lot is moved, so we open up that whole space for parking.
Great.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing for our next board meeting, which is March 14th at 6:00? All in favor, say aye. Next, police and town contract coverage. Currently, we have an ongoing agreement with the Town of Rhinebeck to provide police coverage. This police coverage covers multiple shifts during the week for our village police to cover town, to cover town roads. This contract expired in December 31st of last year. I'm now proposing that we update that to the 2023 year with a rider to go into 2024 as long as there's no, no changes, which is identical to the contract we just had with them. The only changes in the contract that we had was that for town patrol coverage, it went from $65 an hour to $68 an hour. And for village court coverage, it went from $49 an hour to $50 an hour. Other than that, the contract is as it was before with the Town of Rhinebeck. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the Town of Rhinebeck for police coverage and forward it to the town.
Second.
Discussion.
It didn't, so it said that the hours are going to be kind of to be determined, sort of?
And that's always, that's based on staff.
Yeah.
Does this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What do they typically, they only use like 25 hours of the week, right?
Use these two shifts, 16 hours. Yes. That's how much they fund for.
Does $68 again, $50 cover our costs?
Well, we took the average, so we took the average rate of pay and then we took the FEMA vehicle rental, blah, 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 blah. So, yeah. And then we took the percentage for retirement. So we did do an analysis.
Fantastic.
I think it kind of stayed lower because we had some, some upper.
Yeah, some of our guys retired.
So people came in at a lower rate.
They're new people.
That's why we were able to keep the price down.
Oh, great.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So passed. Next resolution. Martina, reschedule budget meetings.
So it's actually been brought to my attention that the treasurer needs to reschedule some of the previously scheduled budget meetings. Currently, that would be the meeting on March 20th. That would need to be rescheduled. The meeting on April 4th would need to be rescheduled. I sent out a list of dates. If you guys want to let me know what your opinions are and I can let you know what's already on my calendar.
Do you have proposals?
Yeah. I don't, I don't have that on, no. I sent an email to them. Oh. Okay, and the reason is because March 20th is my deadline to have the tentative budget. So I was running a little late on the meetings that were having, so we just need to move them on. That's the reason.
No problem.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the dates as proposed.
There's no date. You guys need to select the dates that you.
Oh, I couldn't.
You recommended the email.
I know. I sent an email that said you needed your reschedules and which dates would you like to use?
Would you use March 8? Okay, because I think.
How about March 8?
March 8 is open on my calendar.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
So that would be for the environmental?
Yep, and general.
In general?
5:00 PM.
Yep. If you want that one, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so now I'd like to make a motion to accept the dates.
You missed one.
One more? I thought we had, my counter is all set. I don't know.
Fine, and then the last one is the total budget.
77 before the 20th.
Yes, that was previously April 4th.
Okay.
We are still keeping the organizational meeting for that day, just so you.
Should we do it on March 15th? Was that one of the options? Was that one of the options?
15th is booked.
What about, did we, before we looked at Monday, the 20th?
February 6th. We could do it on the organizational meeting on the 4th.
No, she wants it done prior to March 20th.
As of?
Well.
Oh, that's in prior to March 20th?
Right, because I need to present the tentative budget and I wanted the board to be able to review the entire budget prior to.
Okay.
So what date are you proposing?
Do you want to go out on force?
On Monday, the 20th?
So on Monday, the 20th, we would be looking at it and totally.
The total budget.
The total budget.
Right.
Okay, if you're okay with the 20th, I'm okay with it.
Thursday is spring.
What's the date, March 20th?
March 20th.
So actually now the fire department needs the room for that night.
But they only start at 7:00.
They do start at 7:00, so what time do we want to start?
We, yeah, we can do it from 5:00 to 7:00.
That'll give us motivation to finish.
And you will, and you will have gone through each department, so.
Should not be any new news there.
So there's three meetings for the departments and then there's the one meeting for the whole thing.
Correct. Can we do it at 6:00?
Sure.
No, I don't use an hour.
Then I would have to be late. I have a commitment on Mondays.
Okay. What about? Or the 16th?
Or the 15th?
The 15th.
15th is 4, 6.
I'm going to be out of town.
The ZBA doesn't meet until 7:00. You're going to be out of town?
Yeah, between the 15th and the 19th.
What about the 4th?
That's our board meeting and public hearing.
What about 13th?
3. I mean, I guess we could just come late on the 20th.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Are you not out of town?
I'm out of town like the 10th to the 13th.
So you could do the 16th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the 6th, it's a Thursday.
It's 7:00, it's at 7:00 PM then, so we could do it at 5:00.
And then what date is the 16th?
Thursday, the 16th.
Okay.
Okay.
Total budget.
And so these are all.
Thursday, the 16th.
Yeah.
All five at 5:00.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks everyone for your patience.
And now I need a motion.
I make a motion to accept those dates as discussed.
Second. Second, if all in favor say aye. Moving on. Martina, appoint election inspectors.
Okay, so for our upcoming village election on Tuesday, March 21st, I have reached out to four individuals who are available to be election inspectors. I generally choose two Republican, two Democrat. All four are Donna McGann, Chris Taverner, Betsy Zubroff, and Lauren Belvin. I request that you approve these four election inspectors as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Martina. Next resolution is resolution for paid administrative leave of absence for employee number six, whereas employee number six has been placed unpaid administrative leave pending the investigation into allegations of misconduct. There's really not much more to say. We are currently going to be conducting, if approved, conducting investigation, hoping to wrap that up this week to be able to close this issue out. I'd like to make a motion to have employee number six be unpaid administrative leave absent until the investigation is complete.
And adjudicated. Pardon? And adjudicated? When you be complete, what defines complete? Does, what I'm saying?
As whatever.
And I said, I hope to get it completed by this week. Yes.
Completed means with an adjudication.
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't say adjudication.
Okay. I don't know. That's a wrong word, wrong word, wrong word.
Not a judge.
Correct. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So fast. Salt brine.
So as we've talked about before, the village has now purchased brine equipment. We went to the town and we have an agreement for purchasing the actual brine liquid from the town where they create it in-house. So we agreed upon a price. The town, the document that you see is the town has signed off on that price and now we just want to bring us to agree on our end. Just note that this will be an annual thing because the cost of making this brine liquid is dependent upon the price of the salt. So to be, you know, to be reassessed if those prices change come next season. So I'd like to make a motion that we're all in agreement with the salt brine price with the town.
Second. Any discussion?
The 20 cents that we talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
For the year.
Yeah.
It's a year.
Is it, sorry, town works on a calendar year, we work on a fiscal year, so it's for the town's year or for our year?
That's a good question.
I think they determine the, again, it's like dependent upon the price of the salt.
Right, but we're like to the 20 cents for.
It says for the 2022, 23 winter season.
Yeah, they think they.
So it's a seasonal thing.
Got it.
Closed at the end of the winter season. Let's say April 1st.
Okay.
How's that?
So, whatever. I just didn't know if it was like.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, it's okay.
This is okay. Thank you, Vanessa, for the whole brine thing. And thank you, Kyle, wherever you are, for figuring out how to make it work.
All right, that completes the resolutions on the agenda. Does everybody realize that every month we keep a list of current projects? The current projects are there, meant to be placeholders. Sometimes we will have information, sometimes we will not have information. If we do, that information will be posted and uploaded to the cloud, hopefully that part is there. So unless anybody has any comment, I do not, do we have any updates on the water plant upgrade?
No, they're just still working on it.
All right. The next one is Center Street, which I know time bond. Randy is here.
Good evening, everyone. So Center Street, that's the water main and street paving project. That is currently before the DOT and the County Health Department. We talked to Dave Pearson last week. He has not yet taken up the review, so we're probably a couple more weeks out with him. We are just sort of waiting in the wings for him to provide comments back. We'll be able to turn around quickly if possible. That's the latest.
We have the pipe and.
And apparently a water fountain.
Yes.
Yeah. I think we need to add the water fountain. We'll make that note with the help card. Water fountain, for sure.
Does the water fountain, that needs to go before the catapult pump?
Uh, no, but we will want to, when we install the water main, we'll want to make sure we include a service connection so that it can.
And does everybody know, I talked to Brian Alex and he's reviewed the plans for the water fountain and says that this is a normal business.
Okay. Anything else? Not on Center Street.
Nothing we need to motion on, right?
No, sir, not yet.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay, so sidewalks. I do not have any sort of technology to plug in, so I'm going to just put this here.
That might be a good thing tonight.
We're going to go.
Yeah, I like old school right now.
Okay. So for village, for village sidewalks, so as you all know, you were the recipients of two different grants for improvements to sidewalks and handicap curb ramps here in front of the village. So I'll be a little bit more specific, but the county block grant was for ADA curb ramps, curb ramps at the intersection of East Market Street and Center Street, as well as the curb ramps that cross in front of the municipal parking on East Market Street. So the other grant, the MIG, which is the Municipal Innovation Grant, that's from Dutchess County, that is for some sidewalk improvements along the East Market Street side of Village Hall, handicap access improvement to the entrance to the fire station, sidewalk improvements along Center Street and a new handicap access ramp to the village, to the village hall main entrance door. So I just wanted to give you guys a brief update and then talk to you about what I'd like you to endorse so that we can move the design process forward or take comments from, make modifications, and can you endorse it? So we, collectively, all of us, knew that there were some ADA limitations with the curb ramps that we have out here in front of Village Hall. These two grant opportunities came up and you were successful in getting them. The first action was to have the surveyor come out and do an existing conditions survey out there, so we knew exactly what we're dealing with. So to meet the ADA requirements, there are certain requirements for running slope, so that's as you go along the sidewalk, for cross slope, so that's like how the sidewalk tilts in one direction or another, and then for ramps or the lack thereof in case of the firehouse entrance. So the surveyor picked up survey points for all of that and our first step was to do an existing conditions assessment, just to verify, like, we thought maybe this area of sidewalk was out of compliance, is it or isn't it? So we've done that assessment and then based on that assessment, we put together a proposed plan for improvements that would involve replacing the curb ramps at the Center Street and East Market Street entrance with new curb ramps that are meeting ADA requirements as far as cross slopes, running slope, ramp length, and then providing what are called tactile warning strips, which are used by visually impaired individuals to identify a place where they may be moving from pedestrian space through a vehicular space. So that would be the four curb ramps just outside the village hall entrance here. In all instances, except for the northeast corner of Center Street and East Market Street, there is concrete sidewalk, but where there is existing bluestone, we've gone out, Rick, I think you gave us some feedback, we've gone out, we've looked at the bluestone. That bluestone appears to be in pretty good shape. It has sort of consistent size, it has a consistent surface, so it doesn't have a very big variation in kind of the plating structure of the bluestone. So we think it can be replaced. It will need to be reinstalled to meet ADA requirements, which has to do with setting the bluestone pieces proximate to one another. So we would propose that where there is the bluestone now, that it would be pulled out and then replaced consistent with the ADA requirement. So that's what's proposed for the four curb ramps.
Pulled out, replaced, you mean, reset.
Yes, removed and reset, yes, thank you for that. Similarly, when we looked at the sidewalk at the two entrances for municipal parking, both in cross slope and in running slope, they are not compliant at various locations. So what is proposed is to have a new sidewalk that actually runs through that entire length. And what that will mean for drivers is that there will be a ramp and then there will be a level sidewalk and then there will be another ramp up to the parking area. So it will sort of be a terrace. That gives precedent to the walkers coming through that area and allows for there to be a continuous running slope that meets the ADA requirements. So that's what's proposed for municipal parking area.
The planning board will be delighted.
Will they?
Yes.
This is the modern installation that, you know, as sidewalks are being replaced around the country, that is the proposed approach to doing it. So similarly, on the village hall and firehouse side, we would run a sidewalk through. The sidewalk that runs through the apron where the fire station is has to be extra thick reinforced. There will be tactile warning strips for all points where pedestrians are going to cross the roadway driveway area. And then around the Center Street side of the village hall, currently, the way the parking is configured there and the sidewalk is configured, there's not a place for a parallel accessible parking space, so a handicap individual does not have an easy access way from their parked vehicle up onto the sidewalk and then into village hall. So we propose to bump the sidewalk in towards the village hall, so that's what we're showing here, bumping it in. And what that allows is for an access aisle to be created and striped on the pavement. And there's flexibility in that access aisle where if you are a handicap driver, you can pull all the way towards the curb and you have an additional five feet where you can get out with your mobility device, your wheelchair, and be able to traverse around to the front of your vehicle and get up onto the sidewalk. Or if you are driving a handicap passenger, you have that access aisle closer to the curb then. So there's, it's a driver's choice, basically, for use of that parallel space. And then we did look at the ramp out front. It's settled differentially from the landing. The landing meets ADA requirements as far as landing space and turning space and you already have an automatic door there, but the ramp has a lip that is larger than a quarter inch between the running slope of the ramp and the landing and also down at the sidewalk. So that would be replaced with a new ramp that would meet the sidewalk, again, consistent with the ADA requirements. And then lastly, the access to the firehouse door is currently an eight-inch step up and what we would propose to do is provide a double ramp, so a ramp that comes from the overhead door direction and from the parking area direction up to a landing and then you would turn into the existing landing. In addition, the door here does not have an automatic opener, so it would be retrofit with a wireless opener, so that you would be compliant with the accessway there. So that's the concept. I think the biggest change from what you have now is providing for this handicap parallel space in front of town hall, or excuse me, in front of village hall. And if you have any questions, I know I had emailed this out and I've gotten a couple of questions by email, but if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer those.
This space would be in addition to the space that we have in front of the police department.
That's correct.
So it would not, we would be adding a space.
That's correct.
So the fire department, I had emailed you, asked about the ramp.
Yes.
Into their access, because there's a lot of traffic when there's a fire, either coming from the bay or to the bay, and I want to make sure that that ramp won't impede them stepping down to get into the bay or coming out of the bay.
Yeah, so we actually have changed since we've gotten that comment and we haven't gotten their confirmation that they're acceptable with the double ramp approach, so a ramp coming from the overhead doors and a ramp coming from the parking area to a landing. So it would be like an up and over. If you were parking in that fireman's parking and you were going to the overhead door, we could do this up and over sidewalk. So we've sent that to them and requested that they reply with any feedback. We'd be happy to sit down and meet with them too and talk to them. The other alternative, which we're not showing here because it's more concrete, would just be to provide an at-grade sidewalk that goes around. So we were just trying to limit the amount of additional concrete that needed to go into that space.
The ADA spot in front of village hall, does the sidewalk like slant down into the road to?
Yes, so there will be an accessible route from your vehicle up onto the sidewalk and so a section of the sidewalk will be at grade and then there will be additional sections in either direction that would ramp back up to the height of the regular sidewalk.
The new ramp at village hall, did you include railings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to have railings for that as well as for the entrance to the firehouse.
And what is the width of the ramps that you're suggesting?
Um, so five feet, yeah.
Is there a spot for a bike ramp?
You know, we could go down into a whole little like parkland and now that I heard the kids and their water fountain, I feel like we need to show that somewhere. That's beyond the scope of.
But the bike ramp, the bike rack is there.
There is a bike rack.
I know.
The area where the picnic table and the bike rack are is proportionally unchanged. The only thing that this sidewalk buddy in does bump into is the village hall sign, so we would need to work with you guys to relocate that.
And that's just moving it in?
Moving it in or?
Towards the building.
Maybe like out towards.
Yeah, we could put the sign out towards the road. We looked at where the stop bar is, we're actually showing the sign kind of a little bit more forward where it is currently.
Yeah, we looked at that when we put the sign up and it was blocked by the monument and the trees, bushes that were there.
Yeah, we should look at it again.
So please, I would, I prefer that we relook at that because you could not see the sign in that location when we modeled it when we did the sign.
Okay.
Are you going to have more, is this a rough, and then you're going to have the drawing?
This is a 30% drawing, yeah. So, this is just to see if everyone's okay with the concepts as far as resetting the slate, the extent of the improvements. It's two different grants, so Karen, what's blocked out in orange is CBPG funded, and what's blocked out in yellow is MIG funded, and we're going to set up the bid form so that it's all on a unit price basis. There is a chance we won't have enough budget, depending on how the prices come in, to get all of this sidewalk done. We'll do, I think, what budget allows, just respecting the grant budget. It's always fun.
At what time can we go out for bid?
So, if you guys are in concept okay with this and are willing to kind of endorse it tonight, so we can move forward with the 60% plans, we have probably about a week to turn those 60% plans around, and we want to send this off for permitting. It's got to go to DOT, because the DOT right away is like the entire strength. It's all replacement in kind, so it shouldn't be a big permit lift, but they are notoriously slow. So, we'd like to get it to them in the next week or two, so that they have maybe six weeks to get it back to us, so we can go to bid in the spring.
If the grant doesn't cover a section of the sidewalk, should we think about covering that from some other funds?
We'd have to look at the cost.
How about conversation once we go into it?
When we do the 60% plans, we'll redo the opinion of probable construction costs, and we'll present that to you, so that you can make a decision at that point in time. I'd like to, we're just starting to get our spring construction numbers in, talking to contractors, because prices have been so all over the place over the last couple of years. So, we'll come back to you with that expected number, and this may change in terms of how many linear feet of sidewalk in particular are dealt with. We'll really focus on the accessibility issues, primarily at all the curb ramps.
I'd like to make a motion that we go for the 60% drawing and go to DOT permitting. Second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Love your technology.
Thank you.
So, then, Lady, it is just five hundred gallons.
I don't have anything on Sixth Mall Road Street. Lydia, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Historic District?
Working on it.
Locust Hill?
Okay, so Locust Hill, we actually put together.
Hold the mic, phone closer to you. It's open to you.
So, what I'm presenting tonight is a task order from Time Bond. So, this is to do an analysis of potential future needs from within the village for our water and wastewater. And I've also included the cover letter to Karen, the developer of Locust Hill. And so, the idea is we send this task order and the cover letter along with Time Bond to Karen, and say, "We need some increased escrow funds," so that Time Bond can proceed with the study. Then, once we get the study, we have a board review. That's how we're able to make an informed decision on whether or not we can serve the Locust Hill development.
So, you're looking at the entire task order to be funded by us?
Yes. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this task order and cover letter, and that I can go forward.
My second discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that this is, and I know it's an escrow issue, but, so it's not our dime, on our dime, but I just think that it's, it's just too difficult to discern what our expansion plans are going to be in the municipality. I mean, right now, the master plan from 1993 says that we're supposed to, we're supposed to look into increasing the wastewater line for small lots, and we haven't done anything in thirty years. So, to actually get the idea of what we think we're going to do in the next ten years for a proposed zoning that may come out this way, it may come out that way, what we've been doing in the past is, we just say, "Oh, wow, we have a lot left over." So, if we did Locust Hill, it'd be like 15,000 gallons a day. We know that we had, we will have an additional 60,000 gallons of capacity with wastewater. With water, you know, it's like not even really worth looking at. So, you know, the engineering report talks about, the one that Delaware did, talks about how much will be used for residential, for commercial, if we did the entire village, but it goes by gallons, so roughly, and I've had this discussion with other trustees, it's 100 gallons a bedroom. So, right now, we can add 500 bedrooms. So, do we have a lot left over? Yes, we do. And additionally, it's not a zero-sum game. So, if we did, if we did expand the wastewater line down Livingston Street, or South Street, or whatever, then we had an additional four or 500 bedrooms. That's an extraordinary amount of new revenue, so we can easily afford to expand the plant at that point. So, it's not like we have to say, "Oh, the plant looks like this today, and we can't, and that's it." It's like if we do add folks, for example, if we added 500 bedrooms, 50,000 gallons, that's $246,000 a year. The $2 million bond, if we increase the, what is, I keep calling it the lagoon, it's the ditch, the oxidation ditch.
Oxidation ditches.
It's in this report also, we could, we could increase the ox ditch for $2 million. I mean, that $2 million at 3% interest is 8,400 bucks a month, which is, you know, like, what, 96,000 or 102,000? So, by expanding in the residential area, where you're going to get additional revenues, you get additional revenues, you can get a bond, and you can expand the plant. So, it's not a zero-sum game. It's not really like we have to say, "Wow, is Locust Hill going to cripple us if we determine that we would hook them up?" No, we have plenty left over, and if we exhausted that, that plenty that's left over, we would have revenue to also expand the plant. This is more than anecdotal, it's just, it's good enough.
It's like a solid back-of-the-envelope calculation of like what we're looking for.
Yeah, it's very solid.
Yeah, I hear that.
So, that's where I'm at. I don't really want, and I know it's in escrow, it's not our expense, but I don't see the reason.
No, but money's money.
Brandy, you want to mention it? Do you want to say what your process is for doing this analysis? Which is, we said we needed to do the excess capacity, we voted and removed to do that. We voted to move to have Time Bond do this. So, this is your estimate to be, this is your take on what it's going to take to do that estimate, right?
That's correct. I mean, we, we do wastewater planning in lots of communities. This is sort of a typical, it's really a planning exercise more than an engineering exercise.
It is, it's planning, yeah, exactly.
It may be to an engineering exercise at some point, and to Brand's point, he's absolutely right, if you add more users, you add more revenue. But, you know, this gives you a sense of taking the comp plan, where the recommendations we think they're going at this point in time, and looking at the service area you have currently, what the potential increase in service area in that, increase in usage in that service area may be in the next few years. So, is the hospital thinking of expanding? You know, is the beacon thinking of, you know, who are your big users now, and are they thinking of expanding? And then looking at what your zoning allows as far as additional bedrooms. So, you know, Brand's absolutely right, it's an additional bedroom sort of calculation, a major user sort of calculation that lets you know, like, your village demand looks like it's going to be this. Do you have enough room to take on an outside of the village user? I would say it's more for your diligence. I don't disagree with what Brand said in terms of back-of-the-envelope, it was totally right, but this gives you something detailed to follow back on.
I mean, what's interesting here is, I mean, this, like, as you just mentioned, it's a planning tool, right? So, like, this could actually help, once the recommendations from the comp plan committee come out, that combined with this could help the village sort of be able to answer some of the questions that may be coming out of this, about the, the comp plan isn't thinking about the sewer system per se, they're thinking about, you know, housing and all of the rest of it. So, here's a question that you may not be able to answer, but, you know, knowing sort of where these recommendations are floating, with, you know, potentially adding a lot of bedrooms in like certain spots of the village, would a document like this be helpful for us, once we've gotten the report from the comp plan committee, to be able to make a decision on how to approach some of those zoning questions and some of the sewer questions associated with zoning questions?
So.
I almost don't know what question to ask at this point, but I think we get where I'm going.
I think I do, yeah. So, in terms of zoning, so the first thing we're going to look at are who, who has service now that needs more service? That's like one threshold area, right? And then, where are there parcels that are underdeveloped now in the village?
Right.
And, you know, how close are they to the current service area? And what does zoning say their maximum potential could be as far as number of bedrooms? Okay, that is X amount of flow, and that, you know, I would say, we recommend that's your priority, that you focus on providing for the people in the village, right? Beyond that, it becomes a little bit more predictive. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about higher density, smaller units, as far as the comp plan discussions around housing have been. But that is limited when you have to have a septic system, because you need to meet certain setback requirements, you have to have reserved expansion areas, and so your lot size becomes defined by the area you need for your septic system. If you have sewer, your lot size can become much smaller, and so even in the zone where we are right now, you could get those 8,000 square foot lots as opposed to needing a quarter acre lot, so, or an acre lot, depending on what setbacks are. So, that would be sort of the third tier. So, first tier would be existing users that need more flow. Second tier would be underdeveloped properties that are in the service area, and third tier would be, you know, what is outside. And that is the stuff that Brand is pointing out is much more further down the line, you know.
And it comes with income, revenue.
Correct, correct. There's a lot that may change.
So, for example, we have a planned residential district, which allows the same density on the larger parcels. You get, the dwelling count is based upon an 8,000 square feet.
Lot size, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, every, every 8,000 square feet within that 28 parcel or whatever, you get one dwelling unit. So, you're probably going to have rocks, you're going to have ledges, and you're going to have slopes and things like that that would be not good for septic, but you can get a count that way. But, I don't see the need to go through.
But we already voted to do this. We voted to approve before. Now, we're voting on, now, now we're voting on the escrow to pay for the study.
So, just like, the reason why it's so expensive is just because there's a lot of like, exit, like, once again, sort of existing situation analysis, and then, you know, what are we dealing with coming forward?
Right, because we are looking village-wide first of all, and then sewer-natured-wide. So, I did talk with Vanessa about, you know, we are proposing some GIS-based mapping that could be developed out of this. I think graphically, it helps communicate with the public, you know, how the decision-making was made, but we could pull that out, and that would reduce the fee down about $2,000. But, you know, again, I think it does offer clear, you know, pictures with a thousand words, I suppose, so it does offer a clear opportunity. This would also include, you know, the peer review on what's proposed from the developer in terms of their unit count, their bedroom count, their estimation of flow, and that's something we would normally do anyway. We've worked with Grassmere on similar and other development proposals in the past, on a similar sort of analysis, just so you guys are comfortable with how much they're sending this way.
So, we have a motion, we have a second.
I think Linda, you have a comment?
Thank you. I was just curious, if we don't support the workforce housing project, which benefits the village, where will they get their water from? Or will that project be compromised?
If we don't support, yeah, I was trying, if we don't support Locust Hill?
So, if we don't give them water and wastewater?
Water and wastewater.
Yes, thank you, yes, exactly.
Yeah, this is not a question about that, this is, this is more a question of just making sure that we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed, to make sure that we know what we're giving them. Does that make sense?
Well, if we know that we have enough to give them, you know, in other words, there's still a lot in the comprehensive plan. You have the comprehensive plan, and then you've got to change the zoning.
And then, like, somebody's got to go in and talk, go in and develop it.
It's a long way off to Brand's point.
That's my point.
So, I'm just kind of asking if it's threatening in any way, this project.
I think it is well before the point where it would either be threatening or supportive. It's helping us understand, like, what they're asking, and it's mostly, from how I understand it, we're under an obligation by state law, the sewer system was built by the village, and before.
And the payers.
Right, and the rate payers. Like, before it was turned into a district, it was originally built by the village, and then it was turned into a district and built by the payers. And so, our purpose of doing this is to make sure that the payers are not, the original payers are not giving away the system to someone that it was not originally intended to serve. So, but that doesn't mean that, like, once we have all of the information, if it says, "Oh, like, this might actually impact us down the wire," we could say, "That's totally fine, we're willing to support a workforce housing development, even if it does impact us down the wire, but at least it'll tell us, one way or the other, what we're dealing with."
So, we're going into the decision with eyes wide open?
Yeah.
And it's not costing us money to do that.
Cover down the escrow, let it develop.
And to be clear, Locust Hill would be purchasing the capacity from us, we're not giving it to them.
Right.
They're basically reimbursing our rate payers for infrastructure that we've already built, that they will be using.
Thank you. So, Vanessa, my only request is that we make sure that we get enough escrow, so we're not chasing them for escrow, so that they know the, you know, they know the complete project.
Right, right, right. Let's make sure that the amount is, the amount of the task order plus a buffer of 2,500.
That's what we approved, to have the cover. So, in her ask, her letter to the developer, is to increase the escrow to cover this.
Okay.
That's in her letter to the state.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we get it prior to the bills starting to come out. Thank you.
Sorry, Brand, I think you're right, but I think I'm feeling that we may need a CYA.
Yeah.
I, you know, I. I know, but I read that controller's opinion, and it's, we sailed through that process easily by just showing that we have a lot of capacity left over. And again, it's not a zero-sum game. If we did have a lot of need within the village, we have a lot more revenue, and you can explain the.
No, no, I get it, I get it. That's the end, like, and usually back-of-the-enemy calculations are pretty good, but.
And you guys need to consider, since apparently I'm not working on this anymore, that we're going to have to have a substantial hookup fee for water and wastewater, and I don't think I should be detached, detached from negotiating that process.
No, that's.
Solid favor of moving this task order forward, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Yeah.
Did you?
Just because you want to?
Yeah, just because I'm, okay.
Great.
That's the best way to move forward.
All right. Delaware, you know, you said you were going to come back in the post-mortem for this month. I haven't seen anything, Brand, have you seen anything from?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Rick, anything on Astor Bridge?
Not at this time.
There's nothing on the emergency antenna? Do we have any updates on SOHO?
Yeah, Brandy and I, and Brian, were working on the expanded allowable water, well, why don't you?
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely. So, I can't remember what you guys know, a quick summary, so when Grassmere went to submit for their onsite sewer plant, they were providing their own sewer, the state said, "Where are you getting your water from?" And they said, "Ryanback, the village." And the state said, "Well, let's look in our files," and they could not find any conclusive information in the water service permit to show that Grassmere was in the service area, even though there has been a water service connection to Grassmere for 50 to 75 years.
Like, they're embarrassed, wearing no clothes.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I think we talked about this last month. So, we have put together the application materials to expand the water service area. We have thought it might be prudent to make sure everyone who is served at the south end of the village, outside of the village, is also included in this permit, just so that we don't run into this issue again. So, we talked with Chrissy, she's given us all the users who currently have services on Mill Street and.
Claus and.
And Claus and, what else is down there?
We still had issues with Mill, right? Or going toward Grassmere, who's? Or going toward Grassmere, who's all connected to that?
Yeah, so she's helped us with that. We'll be compiling that information, sending it back to Soho Houses engineer, they're gonna update the map for us, and then we'll have a completed application as soon as their map is updated. Gary, we would just need your signature on the application, and then we'll send it off to the state. We've been having a little issue with the state about how to handle seeker for this. I was considering it as a type-two action, because it's like an administrative thing where we already have pipes in the ground. They're seeing it as an expansion of your service area, so we're kind of a little bit in, you know, kind of just, we're framing this as, this is administrative, the service has been there 50-plus years, and the map just never caught up with the service area. They're saying, no, it's a type-one action, it's expansion of the larger district adjacent to the historic district, so, you know, we're trying to work that out with them, but...
Thank you for having that, eh?
That is the latest, but there should be a permit application ready for you maybe next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got the draft right here.
Vanessa, no more questions?
No updates.
Compost?
Oh, just wanted to share with everyone that I've put together all the materials for the town planning board process to get approval for the compost facility at the highway department.
Wow.
So it felt like, feels like closing on mortgage, kind of? Thank you to Timebond for your help, too. So this includes the planning board materials, as well as the registration materials through the DEC Division of Materials Management.
Wow.
So just FYI, that's gonna go to the town planning board tomorrow.
Well done.
And then we'll get on their next agenda for their next planning board meeting.
Are you guys gonna do this together?
Yeah, just for like, a doggy partnership.
Yeah.
Any other move on? Okay, grants, like, there's no new grants received or new grant applications, personal requests? The first one is trees.
Oh, just to make sure of grants, is anybody that I haven't already spoken to talking to the Thompson Trust about anything? Great, thank you.
Can I just add the... One more thing I forgot to mention with the compost facility, the town planning board, there's one more piece that we're waiting for, which is something in writing from the committee that says we can use the driveway on Violet Hill Road.
I thought we had preliminary review.
It was just more, you know...
It was a conversation.
I just like it.
Yeah, they asked us to measure the site distances out there, which we did yesterday, and I looked at that today, looks acceptable, so we'll send that over to Steve, and he said he just needed to be able to confirm that the site distances were...
We just wanna get him writing.
Yeah.
All right, first your question, Rick, trees.
Sure, I have an estimate from Deep Roots Direct for five trees for $2,065.19. And basically, this is to complete the planting along Route 9 in the north section of town. There, we...
So these are bald trees?
These are all, these are all, these are not our bare root trees, these are all bald and burlapped trees, and we will be having somebody come in and dig some pits for us and such. And the reason why some of these are being planted in the spring is, one, they're not available in the fall, and two, there are certain trees that can only be planted in the spring for their health. So this is to complete the last piece of that project. And, you know, Meg has worked very hard to locate the appropriate trees at the appropriate diameter, and get them all delivered here.
And this money comes out of the money we receive from Foster to...
Correct.
So it's not a budget?
Correct. This is, this continues to be from the Foster.
Make a motion to approve the tree request that is submitted.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. Next on the list is court. So every year, we are asked at the village to audit the court. We do this on a yearly basis. We have an estimate from Lori Dotty, and I believe she's done it before, right? So to audit our court receipts and then provide report on the findings, this is for $900. I'd like to make a motion to accept the request, the first request for $900 to audit our courts.
Second.
Second. Vanessa, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did. Yes, it's right.
Next, I don't believe we have any special requests. Minutes approvals, we have minute approvals. Martina from, who sent them out, 120, 124, and...
110.
110. 110, 120, and 124. Minute approvals. Rick, what are you doing?
Ask me a question.
Hold on.
Do you need me?
Yes, we're proving it, yes.
We're doing it.
Yes, 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 110, 120, 124. I'm sorry, I thought it was on there.
I know, Rick was distracted.
No, that's okay, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes that's submitted by the village clerk for 110, 120, and 124.
Second with comments that Vanessa and I made over...
Already done.
Great.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tree commission. Rick, you're on.
Okay, thank you. All right, so several bits of information. We have a resignation from Nataka Chass, who has been six years on the tree commission, and she has been a stalwart and super hardworking member as part of the group. She's been an essential, an essential component. She's basically resigning just to attend to family and professional matters. I know that she's had to be out in the southern tier to take care of her mom a bunch. So I asked the board with regret, accept Nataka Chass's resignation letter from the tree commission.
With much regret, second.
And with much gratitude towards her work.
Yes. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
How many members are on the commission?
We can be up to nine.
How many currently?
We are down...
You now, you now have eight?
No.
I just got a list from Con. I'm gonna give you a list.
Okay, there you go.
No, I don't need the list, I was just curious.
So we do have an opening, and we would like to, I think we have two openings. And we would like to say that people who are interested should contact Martina, who are looking for people who are both somewhat knowledgeable about plants and trees and are willing to get their hands dirty.
I'm not a member. We are gonna post these openings, correct? We will, we vote in the opening.
We're ready to open and post.
Okay, so I'll ask the board to approve, there are two openings, I'm not a member of that.
Thank you, that clarified it.
There are two openings, I'd like the board's permission to post for the two openings that we have, that's tree commission.
Second. Oh, so move?
Sure. Any discussion? She's second, he made a motion.
Is there a deadline by which people would need to apply?
You know, as soon as possible. We've operated with fewer than a full board, so we would take them as they come in, and if it fills, it fills.
How about by March 14?
It's very short, because we gotta schedule interviews.
How about April 1?
How about April 1?
April 1, like it.
Fair enough.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Application is due by April 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So approved. Okay. Next, you have a letter to the landscapers and realtors?
Yes, so among, oops, wrong button here. Among the issues that the tree commission has come upon is that folks don't understand the law and their responsibilities concerning trees in the right-of-way, whether they need to get a permit to have them pruned or removed, and also, there is no regulation, but the tree commission is very interested in what kind of trees get planted, especially in the under-wire, when there's tree, when there's wires up above. So the tree commission is asking that on village letterhead over the mayor's signature. We send a letter to various landscape services, tree services, and real estate offices in the area, and basically, this letter's asking them to inform their clients as they come through that there are, that there are regulations in the village concerning trees within the right-of-way. And hopefully, this is just another channel to get the information out there, and it does direct, does direct people to be able to get the permits and stuff like that. But in an era when it's just hard to get information out, the commission was feeling this would be an important way, a good way to get the word out. So I'd like your, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this letter to be sent under the signature of Mayor Basset and Mayor Crawford, the chairperson of the tree commission.
Second.
Discussion?
Are you gonna drop these things off, or snail mail?
I'm gonna, it's them, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a big downward dive. We already, the tree commission has actually put together a list of landscapers and all the people who'd be sent, and then we're gonna find them by Microsoft, by email, merge programming, and send them out.
I think it's a great idea. I just saw one little typo at the end, the final paragraph, it should be property owners do not need to fill out an application prior to planting.
Who survives, I'm saying, do not need to fill out an application prior to planting?
Yeah, there was a missing need.
Need, no, I think it's her.
It's her now.
I think this is a great idea, and actually, this sort of speaks to a larger question that's been bandied around a little bit of new folks moved to the village, they don't know a lot of the rules. And there's been kind of this joke that's been ongoing of like, can we give them a welcome package? Of like, this is the zoning rules, and like, this is the planning board rules, and this is when you need to go, and you, congratulations, you live in the historic district, these are the rules that you now live under. You know, I mean, like, something like that, I think, I just wanna, I don't wanna chalk about it tonight, but I just wanna footnote it, that this is, I think, something that might be worth spending some time on.
I did, I started putting together with the mayor, Martina, a quick start guide for Rhinebeck. Welcome to Rhinebeck, here, who we are, where we are.
Right.
And basically, we wouldn't give a full breakdown of everything, but it'd say full more information, you know?
Yeah, check out this website over here.
Exactly, right, here's the link to this page, but basically, you know, sidewalks, your responsibility would be a quick start guide. And then if people need to drill down further, we'd link to parts of the website. But that means all of that information, which is scattered right now on the website, there'd be this one.
I think that's a great idea. Oh, maybe like a webbase, so maybe a Rhinebeck question.
I think it'd be good to include the water sewer billing information. People ask us about their garbage pickup a lot, who picks up their garbage.
You're rebuilding the website here. You know, all this is available on the website, you're just rebuilding it. I don't wanna debate it here.
We had a conversation, it becomes very redundant, because this all is available on the website, and the person that would be maintaining and reprinting and redoing all of this is me.
Take that, she didn't wanna discuss it tonight, she floated the idea. Let's just float the idea and move on, okay?
When I moved here, I ran out of propane, and I called the, we were in Hyde Park, and I said, there's something wrong with the furnace. He goes, you ran out of propane.
You're like, what? Exactly.
Moving on. Climate Smart Task, so we take a motion, it's passed, all in favor, said aye, right?
Good, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Good to strike it there. All right, Climate Smart Task Force, before you mention it, I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna talk about this. Vanessa and I this week had the opportunity to participate in the Youth Empowerment and Sustainable Summit that was held at the Ashokan Center. Vanessa did a workshop, I believe, and I was on a panel today, working with 80-some students from all over the state of New York, who are smarter than most adults on climate. I am totally impressed about what these kids are doing today, and how much knowledge they have, but kudos to many of the people who organized this climate summit. I think it was a great success and a great learning tool for not only us, but for them.
Yeah, and so, yeah, following up, like, the students that we had here tonight, there's another group that we were working with of middle schoolers that presented to the Comprehensive Plan Committee about Safe Roots to School. So my presentation at this conference was telling all these other students about those, my experiences working with young people, and them advocating for themselves and for more walkable, bikeable, and alternative transportation. And so we're using the good activity here in Rhinebeck and trying to create like a ripple effect out and share it with other communities, so it was really, really fun.
And my activity was to educate them on how to interface with government. A lot of people are intimidated on how to work with government officials, and how to come forward, and who do they see, and how do they go about it. So it was a rewarding experience, I should say. So thank you for, and again, thank you for everybody who put that together. I thought it was a great event. Do you have anything else on climate smart?
My monthly report is up on the cloud. Just of note, we did finally start our CAFE project. We had our first meeting in January, and these will be monthly meetings for, I think, 16 months. So we have our next one tomorrow. And so this is us gathering all of our information for our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and then creating a climate action plan. It's just dealing with government operations, but we'll learn how to do it with just looking at our, keeping our own house clean, and then hopefully do another, like, community-wide emissions inventory and climate action plan. I also wanted to give a shout-out to the Repair Cafe, which is, you know, a whole series of these cafes that pop up across the Hudson Valley, and there's a series of them here in Rhinebeck, and they're now hosted at the Brookmead Pavilion, which is like a lovely, huge space. And you bring any of your beloved objects that are broken or need mending, and your neighbors, who tend to be, just like, have random skills that you didn't even know about, are there to fix stuff for free, and it's totally amazing. I got a ring soldered and fixed, I got like the seam on this shirt I thought was broken, and they helped me with that, a couple other things mended. There was even a guy there with like a welding setup in a truck. Fantastic. So check that out, I think they happen at least quarterly. I also wanted to say that the amphibian migrations are coming up soon.
Yay!
Which always makes me happy, because I know spring is coming. This year, we're gonna host a mixer, kind of like a social mixer, for folks who are longtime amphibian migration volunteers, plus those who are just amphibian curious and wanna come and learn more about how to volunteer. So that will be on February 24th at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Rose Hill Tap Room. So it'll be a fun event, and anyone's welcome to come. Go find out more about it on the Climate Smart Rhinebeck website.
Something that I was always curious, is why did you sell them in across the road?
To get to the marital pool. We're such nerds. Yeah, and, yeah, and then, yeah, that's it.
Lydia, any sub-date comprehensive plan?
All of their meeting minutes that they have approved are on the website. They've moved to a regular schedule of the second Thursday of every month, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here. That is also on the webpage. They're having a workshop on February 25th, morning of February 25th, also here, to begin to wrestle with all of the recommendations that have come out of the subcommittees. So I'm sort of putting the carpegarde for the horse a little bit. On January 26th, they had the last two presentations from the last two subcommittees, and it's really been like quite an impressive body of work. I have nothing but gratitude for the work of, you know, dozens of people that have gone into this process, and also the response of hundreds of people of our community to the survey. So they're taking all of the information gleaned from all of the public outreach stuff between the survey, and the kitchen table conversations, and various other sort of public conversations, and then digesting that along with the recommendations...
of public conversations, and then digesting that along with the recommendations from the various subcommittees, and that process is going to take the amount of time that it takes for them to come up with some recommendations. But we were delighted to see almost 700 responses to the survey, about half of those were from people who live in the village, but otherwise, it was people who live in the town, or work in the village, or own a business in the village, and the really wonderful thing as a result of the survey, and we'll be posting some of those results soon, is people in the village are pretty unified on the things that they love about this village, and that they want to see carry on and succeed, and also the things that they don't like about this village. My favorite so far is when everybody answered a question about skateboards and whether or not skateboards should be allowed in the village, the answer, as I'm sure will come as a surprise to no one, is directly correlated with how old you are. So the younger you are, you really love skateboards, and the older you are, you really hate skateboards. That has been sort of the only one that was actually directly correlated with age, but, so it's been a really amazing process, and I just continue, continual gratitude for the amount of work that has been done by, you know, dozens of volunteers to really make this process as fulsome as it has been, so, more soon. Oh, not comprehensive plan, but building, planning, and zoning, I have a vacancy on the zoning board, I would like to post a, to allocate, a...
Notice of opening.
A notice of opening, to go to Martina, can I also have that close on April 1st?
I need second.
Second.
Which board?
Zoning Board, ZBI.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
At 8:00 p.m. on the dot.
All in favor, say, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming on Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day!